Good evening, everyone. It is Thursday, February 4th, 2021, after 7:00 PM. This is a remote meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board. This is a joint meeting between the Planning Board and the Lakeville Conservation Commission. And in accordance with the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open-meeting law, General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20 relating to the 2020 novel coronavirus outbreak emergency, February 4th, 2021, public meeting of the Planning Board shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com/lakecam. You do not need a Facebook account to view the meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date. Just for the record, the Planning Board has Peter Conroy, myself, Michelle McEckern, and Jack Lynch present, and Barbara Mankowski is absent. At this time, I'd like Chairman Bouchard from the Lakeville Conservation Commission to open their portion of the public hearing.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bob Bouchard, Chairman, the Conservation Commission. The meeting will come to order. It is February 4th, 2021.
Do you want to call member present, Chairman?
Yes.
I see Joe Chamberlain and myself and you.
All right. For some reason, I don't see the others. Joe Chamberlain, are you present?
He's trying to unmute.
Okay.
I'm present.
Hi, Joe.
Hello.
All right. Mark?
I'm present.
Bob, present, and I... Right now, Joe, you're the only person I can see. Is there anyone else here?
Actually, I thought I saw Josh Farady is here.
Oh, good.
Yeah, Josh Farady is present.
So we have a quorum.
We have a quorum.
Very good. So members absent would be Nancy Yates and...
John.
John LeBlanc.
Thank you. So at this time, I'd like to turn the floor over to Brittany Gesner from VHB. I believe you're going to present some changes to the plans tonight, Brittany.
Yeah, sure thing. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. Let me share my screen. All right. Good evening, everyone. So tonight, February 4th, this brings us to our fifth public hearing. This does, tonight does represent a slight change in our presentation schedule. Tonight's hearing was originally slated, we're going to discuss wetlands, stormwater. But because of the wonderful conversations we've had with the town and the peer review team and the abutters over the last two months, we thought it made sense to take a couple of weeks and make some slight modifications and enhancements to the proposed project. We issued revised plans to the town last week. If we did want to allow a few weeks for the town and the peer review team to review them before we discussed the implications of wetlands and stormwater. So that's why we set technical data or that technical topic to bump them back two weeks because we don't want to wait to receive comments. We anticipate receiving comments on those before the next year of February 18th. And that way, we can have, we can discuss those and have an engaging conversation on those in two weeks. So we'll use tonight to excuse those enhancements, those slight modifications. I do anticipate that you'll be pleased with the changes. It really is all focused on the perimeter and how the site interacts with the surrounding town. And I hope that these modifications are perceived well. In addition to that, we do want to touch on some of the existing features on the site that are remnants of the former hospital activities. So we'll touch on those tonight. And we just wanted to stop what is there and what the applicant proposes to do to remove them from the site as part of the project. So with that, and then after tonight, you know, we'll have hearing number six in two weeks where there'll be lots of technical data, wetlands, stormwater utilities, et cetera. And then one more gets to string after that. So with that, I'm actually going to pass it off to Katie Kuzma of VHB, of our team, to discuss the existing solid waste disposal area on the site.
Hello, my name is Katie Kuzma. I'm a licensed site professional for VHB. I just wanted to, like Brittany said, we're going to discuss the solid waste disposal area. And this is in approximately one acre area located on the northern portion of the project site. And it was formally used for the disposal of solid waste from the 1950s to 1974. The solid waste was generated by the hospital operations and consisted of incinerator ash, appliances, clothing, or rags, construction and demolition debris and other solid wastes. The solid waste disposal area is unlogged and uncapped as it was placed before the implementation of the state's solid waste regulations. So as part of the project, the project team reviewed two options, which were to remove the solid waste disposal area or to cap it in place. However, we've decided the most conservative approach would be to remove the solid waste area entirely and leave a clean site. And a permit for the solid waste removal was previously approved by Mass EP in 2009. And it is the team's intent to transfer the permit for their use as part of this project. And so I'll hand it over to Tyler to talk about the building abatement.
Thank you, Katie. So for the building abatement, we're mainly talking about abatement of asbestos and other miscellaneous debris and items that are in the buildings. So right now, there's currently 407,000 square feet of buildings in a very poor state of disrepair on the site that don't allow any sort of containment of potentially harmful materials, asbestos-containing materials. We're currently working with the DEP, have completed a number of site visits, on what our plan and process will be to demolish and abate these buildings. We're working on something called a non-traditional work plan. And what that means is that the asbestos contamination and co-mingling is at a point that traditional abatement activities, which you would see someone going in and removing very specific designated areas, is no longer possible at this point because of the co-mingling effect. So we are currently going through that process right now and working on finalizing the plan. The plan does consist of some areas of traditional abatement that will then be followed by a non-traditional work plan, which involves both demolition of the buildings and containment of these asbestos-containing materials. We did want to provide this slide, just provide an overview, because there's been miscellaneous questions throughout about both of these areas. So we just wanted to take a second to sort of come back to some comments that were made earlier in our presentations and just touch on them one more time.
Great. Thank you, Tyler and Katie. So with that, we're going to move on to the modifications that we've introduced to the proposed project. These really are focused on the perimeter of the site and in that way, how the town and the public will perceive the project. So because of that, they are a little bit of site design and grading based, but they're also landscape-based. So Bill Madden of our team, he and I will tag-team this presentation, will kind of bounce some of these slides off each other and work back and forth. The enhancements in general are cohesive around the perimeter of the property. And so because of that, we're going to discuss each area individually. But you will start to notice a consistent theme throughout of taking the same improvements and applying them in all three areas. So we'll start at the front of the site, the area between Main Street and in the front of the building. So that's Area 1 shaded in red here. And then we'll move to the west, which is shaded in blue. So that's the area between the building and Rush Con Road. And then areas to the rear between the building and Rhode Island Road.
So thank you, Brittany. We've had, Brittany mentioned this at the beginning, but we have had a series of just high-level collaborative conversations and documents that have been provided by the Open Space Committee on how to make this landscape even better. And for the most part, we've endorsed and included and integrated in the comments. There was one small modification when we were working with the peer reviewer, that there was an interest for a year-long screen around the entire property. And so his recommendation, and we agree with this as well, that there would be a few naturalized evergreen trees that would be included in the plant palette, just to ensure that visual screening for the property. But in terms of sort of just the highlights, we've steepened the berms around the entire site. We've increased diversity of species selection and even integrated, I think this might have been a note at one of the chats at the last hearing that was focused on landscape. And it was interested, there was an interest to include pollinators in our palette, and we've done that. We think that's actually a great addition for the town and the greater landscape of Lakeville. We've included more of a baffle sort of layering effect for the evergreens to create that year-long screening on the west side, the rear and the front. We've implemented the a no-mow mix fescue on the site where meadow is not. And the intent of that is, it's more of a sort of engineering, but also sort of ecologically responsible strategy of getting grass that can grow, not too tall, you don't have to maintain it, but it keeps a green ground cover for the property. We've added tree protection. This is sort of a detailed component. We've added tree protection for existing trees along Main Street. And we've just specified plugs and a rain garden seed mix for the stormwater structures. There's quite a few more sort of detailed, more technical components, but this is sort of the higher-touch items we wanted to bring to everyone's attention.
Great, thanks, Bill. So diving into Area 1, this is at the front of the site, in between the building. First thing we did is we're proposing to reduce the day-one parking at the front of the site from 275 spaces to 170 spaces. So that's a reduction of more than 100 spaces of day-one construction. This is just talking about the front of the site. I do have a slide later on in the presentation where we'll talk about parking holistically. So just more discussion about parking to come. The other things that we've done is we've added a new addition of an eight-foot-tall berm at the east-leaf front corner. This is the bottom right-hand corner of the site. And then we've also added a two-foot-tall landscape berm along the front limits of the parking lot. And along with that, and we've also added additional shrub plantings and canopy and evergreen trees, which Bill will speak to a little bit more.
And sort of along those lines, the intention of this landscape edge for the property is really to remove visually as much as possible the cars from your experience along Main Street. So we, John, the peer reviewer for the town, he referenced this really great project in Boston where they use evergreen shrubs to sort of just eliminate the cars from the views from the road. Because we do, you know, we do think that this building, you know, it's actually, it's going to be a beautiful building. It's going to, there's going to be some activity that's behind it. So the notion of screening the building from Main Street really wasn't the intention, but we want to eliminate sort of that visual noise of the cars that are in the parking lot. And then also too, we're carrying this sort of planting strategy throughout the site where we're mixing evergreens and deciduous trees and sort of creating sort of veiled conditions. But along this edge of the property, our focus was visually eliminating the cars that would be in the parking lot from the Main Street experience. And this is sort of just a more detailed view. You know, the no-mow fescue will be adjacent between the stormwater structure and the parking. And along Main Street will be this beautiful, seasonally flowering meadow with evergreen trees punctuating it in different locations. This wonderful shrub layer that's going to be on the, we'll call it the building side of the stormwater structure. So you're going to have this real, really cool matrix of plants from, you know, flowering plants to evergreen trees and shrubs without creating, we're creating those sort of visual blocks, but we are doing it in a very sort of layered way. One item too, just to point out, you can see it in this drawing a little bit more. Brittany pointed out the new berm. That berm was really driven, again, the sort of comments we've been getting from the peer reviewer about these oblique views into the site. So we were able to sort of grade that. So it's sort of this rolling topography that sort of pulls in front of or right behind the wetland to screen the, to provide additional screening for the parking.
Great. So that brings us to Area 2, which is the westerly side of the building. And as we mentioned previously, one of the things that we've done around the entirety of the site is steepen the slopes of all of the berms. We were proposing three-to-one, which is a flatter slope that does allow you to mow it, but we've steepened them to be two-to-one, which means that in the same, you know, horizontal area, we could get our berms up significantly higher. And that really is one of the underlying reasons for the change, the no-mow meadow mix that will allow us to create these taller berms. And so what we've done is we've increased the westerly berm height. We were previously showing a berm that buried in height from about 12 feet to 17 feet. That's now increased to 14 to 24 feet tall on the westerly limits of the property. We've also added a swale on the exterior side of the berm to ensure that any stormwater runoff that falls from the berm, we'll be able to keep that on our site and it won't flow off our site on the abutment property. We've also increased the quantity of the trees throughout, which Bill will speak to a little bit more, including greater diversity of the trees. And the big thing that we did here is we've added more than 1,000 linear feet of eight-foot-tall fence that will be equipped with a product called Acoustifence. That's in direct response to a suggestion from one of the abutters. And that eight-foot-tall fence will be on top of this taller berm. So that will actually increase the effective screening to 22 to 32 feet tall. That's almost double the height of what we were originally proposing.
So to piggyback on that, the fence, I mean, not only is this going to achieve, I think, what everyone wants it to achieve, we're also going to do it in a very sensitive way for the adjacent property owners and for the tenants. It's essentially going to be sandwiched within this naturally sort of rolling landscape. So you can sort of see, we use this image to the right to sort of give you a sense of the character of the evergreens or the layering effect of the evergreens on the berm. And then in between that, centrally located on the berm to get the highest possible point for the fence, we're going to have our trees sort of interwoven within this fence. We're just thrilled at the way that this is, you know, the way this is coming out. I think the landscape will complement the adjacent woodlands. And also, more or less, the landscape will be screening the actual fence itself from the adjacent properties. So we're really happy about the way that this is turning out.
Great. So that brings us to Area 3. And again, a consistent theme that you continue to hear. And in the back, we've actually, we were previously proposing 60 landbank parking spaces. So we were not providing any landscaping or, you know, any development in those areas because we're preserving it for parking. We've removed the landbank parking on the outside of the ring road completely. And we've replaced that with a six-to-eight-foot-tall berm north of the ring road. And that fence that I previously just talked about, that will extend around the corner into this rear berm, and this rear berm will also turn the corner and tie into that westerly berm. This berm in the rear, as well as removing the landbank parking, that is also in direct response to request from one of the abutters.
This section shows you sort of how that berm will relate to the incoming trucks and fully screening it from the development beyond. The other component to this planting, Brittany, if you can go to the next slide, is not only a sort of blocking views, but you can sort of see the rectangular geometries in the roadway. Those are representing tractors, tractor trailers. Is that the headlights, there was a comment made at the last landscape hearing about concerns about any light that would sort of pass through the landscape onto the pond. So the team heard the comment loud and clear. And so between the acoustic fence, the rolling evergreen and deciduous planting that's going to occur on the berms will mitigate any of that. So from a visual noise standpoint, as well as the acoustic noise standpoint, this landscape's really functioning at a high level for you guys. So we're thrilled with that. Again, we have a stormwater structure that will be planted with flowering plugs and a wetland meadow mix along the margins. And the no-mow fescue will sort of be the landscape that surrounds that.
So that concludes our discussion about perimeter improvements. There are several other items that I do want to touch on, whether they may have been minor changes or modifications to the plans that we submitted. Or here, we have a slide on parking, which I know was a big topic and a specific request for you, Mr. Chairman, that we dive into a bit deeper. So as part of the revised plan submitted last week, we did reduce the proposed parking on the site. And we reduced that both in the front of the building and in the rear of the building. We are reducing the day-one build-out of parking proposed. We were previously proposing 403 parking spaces. We've reduced that to 298. So that's a reduction of more than 100 parking spaces. And then we've reduced the possible full build-out parking spaces by 60 from 564 to 504. We do want to touch on, because this project is speculative development, we do not know exactly who the tenant will be. We know that the type of operations that they'll have, and it's really one type of operation that we're building for, but as far as the details of how they will operate this facility, we don't know who that tenant is. And because of that, we do, we are requesting a bit of flexibility in regards to parking. Because sometimes parking provided is not always a one-to-one ratio with the average number of daily vehicle trips that are accessing the site. And I've identified a couple of examples of why it may not be one-to-one with the here. For example, seasonal peaks. Some companies operate with seasonal peaks. And those do not represent the everyday average. You know, those are infrequent occurrences where you may need to ramp up operations or have a few additional employees on site. So that may be one reason why we may need to accommodate additional parking. Another reason may be company-branded vehicles. Some companies have electric vehicles parked on-site, which this property is proposing 20 electric vehicle charging stations. So some companies have electric vehicles parked on-site. That way, if a plane needs to run an errand, they use that company-branded vehicle. So that may not be, you know, a daily vehicle trip to the site, but that may be a reason for additional parking required. Other things might be onsite meetings or trainings, again, infrequent occurrences that do not represent the average daily vehicle trips, but a reason why you may need to accommodate additional parking sites on site. And some other reasons may be, you know, equipment, maintenance equipment, snowplows, landscaping, or visitors. So the applicant is proposing a reduction in the day-one parking. However, they are requesting the flexibility in order to market this building to the prospective tenant. We are requesting approval of the full build parking, just to help the odds of, you know, this building getting a tenant and being a successful project. Some of the other things, we just want to touch on very briefly, a couple of additions to the set that we issued last week. We added two security booths, one at either side of the facility. These are eight-by-eight-sized little booths, just to help keep secure premises. And then we've also added a bike rack near the front part of the building. And then finally, I know we have not touched on stormwater in a lot of detail. We are going to next hearing, and I'm very much looking forward to it. But I did want to mention a couple of adjustments that you may or may not have noticed. We did revise the grading of the two-surface infiltration basins, remove those completely, the 100-foot buffer zone to the wetland. So here you can see, the blue line represents the 100-foot buffer zone. And you can see, we pulled both of those basins out of that area. And then we've also added a perforated pipe to convey clean runoff around the site before it gets into the stormwater management system. This will help disperse infiltration throughout the site. However, our stormwater design remains conservative in the fact that we've not actually accounted for that perforated pipe in our calculations. But that's another addition as well. And again, I'm very much looking forward to discussing stormwater in a whole lot of detail in two weeks from tonight. So with that, that concludes our presentation tonight, very short and sweet. But I do hope that you are, you know, pleased with some of the modifications and enhancements that we've proposed. And we really look forward to hearing your thoughts and answering any questions you have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Thank you for the presentation. I had a couple of quick questions, one from Bill Madden. Bill, you had brought up that one of the evergreens or a species of evergreen you're bringing in is going to be naturalized. Basically, that means it's not native, but it's not invasive.
Correct.
And will that only be used on that corner of the parking lot where the abutters' concerns with the headlights, or is that going to also be sprinkled throughout the landscape?
It's sprinkled throughout the landscape, just to keep it consistent.
Okay. And is it one or two species?
Two.
Okay. So Brittany, regarding the roof runoff, the perforated pipe you just brought up, is that something that there'll be stormwater calcs to come along with that? Or that obviously, I think environmental partners will want to just take a look at that?
Yep, yep. That's detailed in the stormwater report. We've been conservative and did not assume any infiltration from that perforated pipe so that our basin and our pipes are sized, assuming no water will infiltrate. However, any water that does would just be a benefit to the underlying groundwater.
Okay. So your presentation tonight looked a little bit different than what I saw when I went to the link on the plans, as far as the Acoustifence. It looks like it runs basically the top of the berm, the entire length of the berm, from the Main Street side back to that bend. And what I also saw is, looked like a four-foot chain-link fence around part of the rear retention on. Is that accurate?
Correct. That fence runs the top of the berm from the westerly side around the corner and into the rear. And that is shown on the plans we submitted last week.
All right, okay. I did see that. I just, the graphics tonight look a little bit prettier and everything looks overlaid, so.
Gotcha.
Yeah. And Mr. Chairman, just on the four-foot fence, that's just for safety. So it's just so people don't go in the retention basins.
And that's strictly chain-linked. There's no visual or sound barrier related to that.
That's correct.
Correct, yes. There are two line types for fences. Correct, yes. There there are two um two line types for fences. There's a small circle and a larger circle. And the the larger circle indicates the the acoustic fence.
Yep. Um. That's all I really have. I I did like that you reduced the parking. Um I, at the eleventh hour today, I received a memorandum from environmental partners because we had a discussion about the trip generations and the uh the parking and how we felt like it didn't correlate. So they did some homework based on some other possible land use codes uh using code one fifty that you did up through one fifty-seven that are all similar uses of probably potential tenants that could be in this space which are drastically different trip generations based on that. So I'm not looking to blindside at this meeting as much as to let you know that this is coming. And you know, none of the other planning board has seen it. I just got it like five minutes before the meeting. But I wanted to bring it up that we'll circulate that so that we will need to have another discussion about the potential tenant trip generation, probably what would result in some sort of a conditioning if if the planning board were to vote to approve based on you know, uh uh you're telling us code one fifty and I feel like that's probably not the most conservative numbers based on some of the other similar warehouse uses. So.
Understood. We look forward to receiving that memo.
Okay, yeah, and like I say, I'm not looking to make a lot of discussion, just letting you know it's coming. Um so are there any other planning board members that would like to make comments based on the changes in the plans? Peter?
Yeah, Mark, I have a couple of questions. Uh first of all, to to uh to second what you were saying, I am a I'm a very big fan of the reduction in the parking. Uh I'm also a big fan of the guard booths, the addition of the new security uh gates. I I think that's really gonna um help tremendously. I I I was looking at it the whole time and wondering where they were, when they were coming, so I'm glad that they're at it now. I I I was curious about the acoustic fence as to where where the lines are shows, there's trees on both sides, is that correct? So that the the uh abutters get all the benefits of the acoustic fence, but they're not staring right at the fence. Is that is that accurate? It that's that's how it looked.
That's exactly correct. Yeah, and and the fence screening itself is a forest green color, which also assists.
Oh, okay. All right. Very good.
Uh Tyler, is there a durability slash warranty on the acoustic fence material?
Does come the manufacturer's warranty, uh just about a year. Uh and then uh the tenant would be responsible for maintaining it from that point forward. But it is specifically made for this outdoor use.
Uh anything else, Peter?
No, I I mean, I I there is, I would like to see the forward parking lot protected by a by a uh security gate, but I I know that that gets more and more complicated because there's visitors and whatnot. I I feel as though even the employees enjoy getting going through a gate and then they know their car is safer and and everything. Uh there's no joy riding through or whatever, but I I see I see why they put where they put them. Um so that that's about it.
Thank you. Um Michelle, do you have any comments?
I do, thank you. Um wow, um I I love the berms. I love that they've, you know, gone up so much uh in so many areas and really appreciate how much you guys are working with the abutters, listening to everything and um and making these big changes. Um Brittany, uh thank you for bringing up the landfill and demolition. Do you mind just um giving us an idea of how much that demo and cleanup will cost?
All right, I'll I'll speak to that, Brittany. Uh so right now, our estimates bring in the total uh between hard and soft costs uh in the range of ten million dollars uh for cleanup at this current time.
Okay.
And demolition?
Yes.
Okay, um also, I know um this isn't something that you touched on uh today, but there has been some questions uh that I've seen in regards to taxes. Um there was a document that you had forwarded to us in the beginning of this process and um I don't know if you have it handy, but um I just wanted to give everyone an idea of um, you know, the amount of taxes that will be generated from this. Uh it's a document dated eleven nine twenty twenty, follow-up planning board materials. Do you know if you have that?
Yeah, I don't have that in front of me, Michelle, but I do remember the document and I do remember uh working with the contractor and off the top of my head, just again, not having it in front of me, we anticipated the tax revenue to increase twenty-five times or twenty-four times over what it currently is uh today. Uh and that's based on uh building and land values. Uh and then there would be additional tax revenues that would come from the tenant uh themselves. Uh but you know, given that we don't have one and this is what we're proposing, just based on our uh initial conservative standpoint, it would be roughly twenty-four, twenty-five times uh over what it is currently.
Very good. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack, do you have any comments?
Uh yes, uh you know, I agree with uh Peter that this acoustic fence, I think, is really a wonderful idea uh in reducing the the sound that the abutters might in incur, but they don't have to look at the fence. They get to look at more green live plants, which in bushes rather. I think that's wonderful. Uh the gahd houses, I think, also with Peter, I think is a great idea to control the people that are coming and going out of the facility. Tyler, I have one question for you regarding asbestos cleanup. Is the the cleanup process is going to allow uh for the control of asbestos fibers to disperse through the facility and over into the abutters area?
That's exactly correct. So we have full-time uh monitoring that is an additional service and third-party service uh that is separate from the contractor themselves. Uh so they work along with DEP to make sure that the containment efforts happening are in line and that there's no transmission of any uh fibers or other hazardous materials. So uh that does provide just kind of that third party where you're not solely relying on the contractor and provides that insurance that it's being done properly. Uh but yes, that's what they're specifically there to monitor is exactly that.
Great, thanks, Tyler.
Is that all, Jack?
That's it, sir.
Thank you. Um. Before I um move on to other members of either Conservation Commission or abutters, Brittany or um Tyler, would you like to make any comments on, you had shared with us the expanded ENF uh from the state? Uh would you like to make any comments based on that? I mean, it overall looked pretty clean and it looked pretty positive. Uh I did notice about thirty pages came from uh Mr. Scott. He had a lot of input and they heard him as well.
Yes, uh I can speak to that. So um we had uh filed with MIPA uh back in the fall and requested a two-step review process. So we submitted an expanded ENF um that included a traffic study and a greenhouse gas analysis. Uh and we we went through the public comment period, um you know, abutters submitted comments and also the the reviewing state agencies um as well as the town of Middleborough. And based on those comments, um MIPA issued us a certificate on that expanded ENF um and the certificate is granting our request for a two-step review process. We are now entering into that second step uh it which is called a single environmental impact report. Uh so we're beginning that process now. Um that report will mostly be in response to the various comments um that were submitted to MIPA office uh by state agencies, including Mass DOT, Mass DEP, and DOER. Um apologies for the alphabet soup. Um so we'll be preparing an environmental impact report responding all of those comments um and uh submitting any any minor modifications to the project uh pretty much as we outlined today. Uh we'll be submitting all of that to MIPA um in about, I I don't know the timeline off the top of my head, but I believe we have about a six to eight week uh preparation time of the report and then that will go into MIPA. It would be a second public comment period. Um and then we will anticipate the the certificate from MIPA at the end of that second public comment period and then hopefully that will um conclude the MIPA review process.
Thank you. Um and before I continue on with more comment, I just wanted to go through this week's planning board packet included some comments and letters from abutters. Uh one was uh passed on from Mr. Scott uh on behalf of a Frank Sterrett, who was a former Lakeville resident regarding noise. Uh we had email comments from Katie Gonzoals. Uh there was also a document from Mr. Scott uh related to project noise. Uh the Open Space Committee put together a uh a document that we recommended, the planning board recommended regarding landscape maintenance plan. And uh Mr. Ayers from Rush Pond Road uh also supplied the planning board with a document uh relating to project noise risks dated January twenty ninth. Uh so thank you all for your input. All. So at this time, uh anybody from Conservation Commission would like to make any comments? Joe?
Couple of minor things here. Uh I I know, I'm sure it's a typo on one of the very early um shots that uh was given to us about the fescue. It said a now mo fescue. We know on the on the plans it shows no mo or non-mo. That just that word should be corrected just in case. Uh I'm sure we dealt with this somewhere along the line, but I'm sure that all the building and parking lot lights are adhered to dark skies and are all looked down.
Yeah, that's part of the plan. We have reviewed the outside lighting. Yep.
Okay. Uh during demolition, I'm I'm sure it's going to be water pumping and hoses spraying to keep the dust level down, right?
That'll be a condition that we'll put on that. Yep.
And um I'm not sure if the Historical Society or the Historical Commission has gotten hold of you about this, this, there's some murals or ceramic tiles or something, I think in the nurses' building that they wanted removed and preserved. Do you know?
So we, uh I I haven't uh heard about that directly. We did have a hearing where the Historic Commission did come on and read a narrative. Uh the narrative, I believe, was actually originally produced during National Development's time. Uh so they did come on, they did read that, do have a copy of that, um just not on hand. Uh and it didn't mention anything with that. It sort of concluded that they had reviewed the property and didn't find anything of historic significance, but if there is, um we're happy to have that discussion and figure out what it may be. But no, I'm not currently aware of that.
Oh, okay. That's all. That's all I have.
Yeah, so Joe or anybody else that's present that has a communication with Nancy LaFave or anybody else on Historical Commission, if you wanted to reach out to them to make mention, now's the time if they'd wanted to try and salvage anything from the buildings. I'm sure that if it was a removal of a tile, uh Tyler probably wouldn't mind as long as there was no uh liability on him.
Um I can contact people.
Is that reasonable, Tyler?
Yes, absolutely. There's there's currently uh no allowed access without full hazmat suits in the buildings, but um we will uh have more with our environmental people and see if we can get um something removed if that's what they like.
Yeah, I think I think what they're talking about is some sort of a a tile that's applied to one of the outsides of the buildings. It's yeah, somewhat colorful. I think I, years ago, I went by it on a tour of the site and uh it's exterior, I believe.
And I'm given to understand that they can be relatively easily chipped off or separated from where they're where they are.
Absolutely. Happy happy to help in any way.
Okay, I'll I'll contact the people on the Historical Society and Historical Commission to see what they have to say.
Thank you, Joe. Mr. Bouchard, do you have any comments?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Welcome. Uh Josh Farady?
I'm all set. Thanks, Mark.
You're welcome. Uh so at this point, I'm going to move on to some of the abutters. Um a lot of folks haven't shared their screen, which is fine. I'm just um you know, there's one in particular, uh Mr. Turner, I I see you're present if you'd like to make a comment uh because you requested a major change in the back of the site. I just wanted to see that that was satisfied uh to your liking. You are. You with us, Paul?
Hold on.
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, I am a a uh Mr. O'Shaughnessy has spoken with uh Mr. Mather and Tyler and uh I am satisfied with the changes.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh. So if there are, and please bear with me, I'm trying to go back and forth between thirty-five participants over two different screens. So if anybody would like to make a comment, brief comment, please raise your hand. Um Mr. Ayers, please state your name and address. Uh Mr. Ayers, you are muted. Please unmute.
Okay, can can you hear me?
Yes.
Well, thank you for calling on me. I uh twenty-one Rush Pond Road, I'm on the butter. John Ayers, A Y E R S. And the first thing I'd like to say is I'm glad to see the berm was increased in the acoustic fence there. My question, I think, really is the only question I have is was the analysis updated to reflect what the noise reduction uh is because of the changes and primarily the backup beep and noise?
Well, I'll answer that question. Uh the answer is we are currently going through the process and will share that updated report. Um because we had a report that was previously presented during our noise hearing and that report was compliant with state regulations. We're not going to go back through a full report, but we do have our sound engineer, Mike, who was on that call that we had all spoken with going back and looking at these changes and showing what reduction there will be. Uh because the height of the berm has increased and there's now a physical barrier in place, the sound transmission will be equal to or less than what was previously presented. It will not be more than. So I understand the question is, well, how much of a reduction if there is one? And we are working on that and we will share that updated report. But uh again, the report that we presented was compliant. This is just a further reduction. Um so we are going through that process right now and we will make sure that we share that soon.
Well, my concern, and I'm sure the abutters, I mean, there's a couple of houses on Rush Pond that are very close to this operation is the beeper noise, the backup noise. And I would expect that this design change you made would knock that noise on quite a bit. I'd just like to know what it is. But I understand your work.
Yeah, no, and we and we're going to do that. It's it's a completely understood question and and we are absolutely going to do that and make sure that that information uh is shared. Um so we will do that. The the best way that we know how to control sound is physical barriers. And now that the berm counting the height of the fence uh is somewhere in the range of almost double the height uh of a truck, uh we're definitely excited to see what decrease that will be. Uh but again, in the worst-case scenario, which is unlikely, would at least be equal to what we already presented.
What you already presented, in my view, is totally inadequate inadequate, sorry, for the abutters. That's why I was happy to see that you made a change. Thank you. That's all.
So uh Tyler, based on that conversation, um would you anticipate that updated sound information for the next hearing or after that?
I don't have an answer on that right now.
Okay, that's fine. So give us an update. So you know, it'd maybe be added to the agenda or or just.
Yeah, and and I'll make sure and I'll make sure that a physical document is submitted, so we'll make sure that gets over to Michelle. Um and and we'll have that available.
Thank you. Um so at this point, I looking through the the chat, uh Scott Turner would like to ask a question about the solid waste disposal area. Uh Scott's uh speaking on behalf of the Town of Lakeville. He's from Environmental Partners, the town's peer review engineer team.
Thanks, Mark. Um my question is regarding the nature of the solid waste disposal area and just a clarification that it is solid waste not hazardous waste, correct?
Not been answered that, but do we have Katie on the line still?
Um, so the, yeah.
Katie, your audio is pretty bad right now.
Uh, can you hear me now?
That's better.
Um, so the solid waste disposal area is primarily consisting of construction and demolition debris. We're not aware of any hazardous waste present within landfill. And it has been tested, the soil.
Thank you. Thank you. So I had some other comments posted from the Lake Cam guys, from people posting on Facebook, comment from Facebook Susan Spiller about how about decreasing the number of truck bays as well as Christmas tree shops is double the size and square footage in space, but only 60 truck bays. Another comment from Facebook, Chris Mello. I can't think of anyone with the volume of activity that they're talking about building or Amazon doesn't even need that many doors. And then Tim Long, is there a tenant ready to move in when this is ready? That's already been answered. And Austin Stauffer, I think the traffic where it's located is going to be bad. That area is already a tough spot. 18 wheelers trying to pull in and out will be a nightmare. Those were some of the comments off of Facebook. Would anybody from VHB like to make a rebuttal comment back to any of that?
Uh, no, not from VHB.
Thank you. So again, any other butters? I see Mary Murphy, could you state your address?
Yes, I'm at two Laurie Lane.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I haven't heard any plans for how to mitigate any of the noise or light pollution coming towards Laurie Lane.
There isn't currently any mitigation measures to mitigate anything at the state highway right now, no. We've done as much as we can possibly do at this time on our own property. But with the state highway in the front of the property, that's sort of its own animal. And we'll continue to review it and see if there's anything that has come up, but nothing to date has been available to us that would have any real impact.
Thank you. Any other, anything else, Mary? Mark Bodwell?
Hi, Mark Bodwell, 13 Rush Pond Road. This is more than operational.
Mark, your, your audio is. Mark, we got none of that. That's your audio is really awful. Nothing. I would recommend maybe you type a comment into the chat because I can't understand you.
Cut out his video.
The Lake Cam guys, Lake Cam, Diego, try that now. Nothing. I'm sorry, Mark, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Nope. So Mark, I'm going to ask you to type something into Facebook. That's horrendous. I'll come back to you. Any other butters, please raise your hand? Daniel Ferreira?
I was just curious on the, what they anticipate, the length of time from all the demolition to rebuilding, the, the length of time for that and where do the berms come into place? Are they, is that, is that part of landscaping after all that's done? And, you know, if this is going to take potentially years to build, is the, you know, are we, are we just, you know, having to listen to that for all that time until the landscape's done, until the berms are done and the trees are planted?
So the length of time for demolition right now is scheduled to be six months and the six months is not all physical demolition. So that doesn't mean buildings are being torn out. It's a very small portion of that six month timeline. A lot of that has to do with the preparation of demolishing, of demolishing the building, removing hazardous materials, which is just man work, people walking around in the buildings and cleaning things up prior to them actually being demolished. So the demolition portion of the six months is much smaller than the overall timeline, but that is the overall timeline for that activity. And towards the end of the demolition, the site work begins and that's where the berms come from. So the landscaping portion of the project does come at the end and that is the plantings, but the actual construction and shaping of the earth does happen much sooner than that.
And what is the?
The goal is definitely to get that stuff in as soon as possible because to your, I think your, your point is, is that, yeah, we get the point of the berms when the building's built, but it's also going to have a similar effect during construction. So we definitely want to get the rough grading done as soon as possible. It's a creative for, for all parties.
I think, I think it's probably a more of a noise hazard well, it's on the construction with machines running excavators, you know, dumpsters, all that sort of thing. What is the total length of time you'd anticipate from, from start to finish?
16 months right now. And that's mainly dependent, the biggest swing in that would be weather, mostly the winter.
Thank you, Daniel. All right. Any other butters? Again, bear with me, I'm trying to click between 36 people on two different screens, but please raise your hand if you'd like to make any comments. I see no other comments. So I do have one question actually for Amy Questle while we're here and you're president. Michelle brought up a good point. I think the, the minutes for these meetings need to be approved. Where there are joint meetings, can the planning board approve a copy of the minutes for the planning board? And then separately, if the conservation commission's not at the meeting, could the conservation commission vote on those meetings independently of the planning board, but still the same set of minutes because they're joint meeting?
Yes. Yes.
And, and if worse came, just say we're at the end of this process, will we be able to approve minutes at regularly scheduled planning board or con con meetings that aren't part of the public hearing? Because minutes will continue to commit.
Yes, they are, they're just an agenda item. They're a business item. They are not, they do not have to be approved in a public hearing.
Thank you. This seems too easy. I have no other discussion. I see a lot of people aren't sharing their screens and there's no other comments. So I think that will conclude tonight's hearing unless.
Sorry, Chairman Mark, I think the bloggers had typed something in the, in the chat because they couldn't get their audio to work.
Oh, thank you. Are there any businesses in Lakeville that operate 24/7? Will boards consider limiting operation times from 7 a.m. to 5 p.m.? So I know currently there are some businesses in the industrial park, Kenneth Wells Drive, that do operate 24/7. The planning board does plan to condition some limited truck traffic on this site if it is voted to approve to the, I'm going to say northeast side of the building so that Rush Pond Road residents would be protected from noise overnight. But to answer your question, it's not, this would not be the first business to operate three shifts in Lakeville. We will try to limit some of that noise with conditions toward the project, but we're not going to tell them, I don't feel that we should tell them where it's a logistics business to not operate around the clock. So we will try to control the noise where, where the trucks would be located overnight and their activity. That's where I think the planning board stands. Tyler, would you like to speak to that at all or with that response?
Uh, no, none of the responses this time.
Thank you. So I have another comment from John Jenkins. Can this be moved to town meeting to approve? No, it does not require that. Over limiting interactions beyond the butters. This has all been discussed that the notification requirements have been met because of the development opportunities district that was put into place after Cisco. This is an entirely different process because the town voted to have this zoning, this zone in their zoning. And I see a comment that also Dick Scott may want to speak. Dick, it looks like you're muted. I don't know if you can hear us.
Hello?
Yep, there you are.
Great. I have a few questions. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Can you hear me? Yeah. I have a couple of comments. The beginning, since the beginning of this project, I think the, the, the two most important things that jumped out were obviously noise and traffic. And through the proposal, the peer review, the responses, and now the MIPA has added an additional layer of review on this project. I'm wondering how the board is going to proceed in reconciling the various comments that have been made, the responses that have been made. How, how are you going to reconcile of all the reviews that have taken place and are taking place? How will that manifest itself in terms of whether or not it's something that's worthy of conditioning or not? So I guess what I'm asking is how are you going to reconcile when there's difference of opinion, for example, on the peer reviews and responses?
Uh, so for the most part, we're going to side with the peer review that's representing the town. Not the proponents, they're not really a peer reviewer, but they're noise expert. And then, so I, 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 I don't fully understand the question. I guess I feel like you're asking me, how are you going to vote? And we don't know that yet as far as the planning board. We need to discuss all this. This is a lot of information we've taken in over, you know, five meetings so far and there's going to be at least two more, if not three more, depending. And I can only speak for myself as a planning board member, we're going to take all that information and really digest it and weigh heavily on how we condition anything and, and it's going to be in the best interest of the, the butters and the town. So I mean, I, I hope that answers your question, Dick.
The, the, the reason I'm asking the question, Mark, is if you look at the December 28 response to comments from the peer reviewer, in section two, it said, they were talking about averaging the background noise, for example. And the response is broken up into two answers and the second answer is really problematic to me and I'll explain why. The response says the existing site is not virgin. It's not a virgin site, but an abandoned industrial site. And I don't think the hospital is an abandoned industrial site. We could split hairs, but I think that the, the, the reason I'm concerned about that is it says it previously had sound sources on it that were likely much higher than those from the proposed trucking facility on a 24 hour basis. But these were abandoned some time ago. And I agree with that. They've been abandoned for 28 years. But I don't agree with the fact that, that the noise was much higher than the proposed trucking facility. And I've lived at Rush Pond Road for 42 years. So from 1978 until 1992, I didn't even know the hospital was over there. And I'm concerned that we're averaging background information on a per hourly basis over 10 days because as you know, that background becomes very important. And it goes on to say.
Dick, I'm not going to do this.
Conservative assumption is to assume the site background is as is.
And I, and I agree with that in its current abandoned condition. But even though the intent was never to restore the site to virgin land, there, go
ahead.
Please stop. We, we can't keep doing this at every meeting and you, you take 45 minutes of the meeting to, to discuss. That's why we asked.
I've never taken 45 minutes, Mark.
You actually did on the first meeting.
It's a public hearing, isn't it, Mark?
I gave you the floor for 45 minutes on the meeting for noise. So don't tell me it hasn't happened. I've asked you to put your comments in writing and you do that, but now it's, we're going down that same slippery slope. You, you, you got to wrap this up. That, that site was developed. It's a priority development site. It's going to be something, whether it's this or something else. Something else is going to generate noise and I feel like you're putting this back on the planning board to say, this is a pristine place with deer and rabbits and that's it and that's what it needs to remain. And that's not fair to, for you to say that to the planning board. Cause if, if, if this project doesn't happen, something else is going to go there, Dick. And there's going to be noise one way or another.
It's how, it's, it's how we arrive, it's how we arrive at what the regulatory threshold is. I'm talking about the regulatory threshold, 10 dB above ambient. And what I'm asking for is an examination, which was right out of environmental partners' comment and the response to comment was outrageous.
All right. Hang on right there. Scott, can I get you to comment on this, please?
So our review consultant, Epsilon reviewed the report. If they submit additional information, we'll have them, we'll have Epsilon review, review the, the, review the additional report. We can go back and I can discuss it with Epsilon. We can discuss their comments and report back to Mark.
Okay. Can I ask another question?
Go ahead.
In the MIPA, the question was asked whether or not environmental partners reviewed the MIPA submittal. And Middle Borough's Concom asked the same question and I'm just wondering, is environmental partners going to review the MIPA as part of the peer review?
All right, you received that now?
Yeah, so I took a look at their filing and I've also reviewed their certificate. And we have asked, last hearing, we asked questions about MIPA when they were going to submit. We work, you know, at the request of the town and if, you know, Mark and the rest of the town officials want us to review the, the single EIR, we will certainly do that as well. you know, Mark and the rest of the town officials want us to review the, um, the single EIR, we will certainly do that as well.
Does that answer your question, Dick?
Yeah, um, I have some information that might be useful if you want me to share it. Otherwise, I'll just put it in writing.
Yeah, please, please put it in writing, submit it. So it's the same as all the other stuff. So we have a, a week or two to digest it and, and send it around to all the pertinent parties. Please. I see a comment in the chat from a Mr. Cooney, who I think is present, will they consider less dock doors? Uh, I'm sure that's a, a Tyler question, but it's.
Uh, the, the answer is, um, yes, we're going to continue with our proposed design as is without changing it. In the event that we get a tenant that has less of a need, it is accretive for both parties to reduce the doors to what they need. Um, so there's no advantageous route to add more than what they require. So if we reach that point that they feel that what we've come up with is more than what they need, we will reduce the number of dock doors at that time.
Thank you. Uh, I have another comment in Facebook from, uh, John P. Jenkins. At this point in the process, does the planning board still have the ability to deny the project permission to proceed? Uh, from a procedural standpoint, I guess it's a good question. And I think initially, and I'm gonna defer to Amy from Town Council, initially the planning board has the ability to approve, deny, or approve with conditions, a special permit. Is that correct?
Um, that is correct. Um, however, because this is a, a special permit, um, there is, there is, um, much discretion on the part of the planning board.
And would it be inappropriate for the planning board to deny this late in the game, to go this far through the process without to hearing? Or is this, it would be normal to hear the whole process and still be able to just deny?
Oh, of course. You, you can't, um, you can't deny without hearing all of the information.
Right.
Um, that would be, that would be arbitrary and capricious, which is one of the standards that they, that they look at when looking at a denial.
And that, and even at that, to deny after all of this, you would have to come up with, uh, fa- fact-based information as to why you made that denial?
Correct. There would have to be, um, there would have to be explicit findings. So with a special permit, when the court reviews a special permit, they, when they look at an approval, um, it's a little bit different than when they look at a denial. When they look at a denial, you need to state your reasons for the denial.
Thank you. Uh, anybody else have any questions? It looks like we're around 32 participants. I believe that's it. Um, there is one other document that just to acknowledge, um, Mr. Scott sent over some town documents to Michelle at the 43D from his coordinated position regarding the, uh, warrant article for the 43D priority site, a development site. Uh, so we did receive that documentation and uh, some other pages to it. It looked like a cover letter and about five pages. So that will be circulated to the board and peer review agent and so forth for discussion and review. Thank you. And so at this point, uh, seeing that there's no other discussion, I'm gonna make a motion to continue this public hearing until February 18th at 7:00 PM on 2021.
Second.
I have a motion and a second from the planning board. Uh, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Michelle votes aye, Jack votes aye, and Peter, motion carries with a majority. And I make the same motion for the conservation commission. I motion to continue this hearing until February 18th at 7:00 PM 2021.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. Chair, would you like to do a roll call?
Yes, uh, Mark?
Aye.
Joe Chamberlain?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
And myself, aye.
So the conservation commission motion carries with a majority as well. Um, and being that there is no other discussion, I would like, uh, first to make a motion to adjourn the conservation commission hearing.
To adjourn or continue to the next meeting?
We, we already continued, so now we just need to adjourn.
Excuse me, yeah, um, got my, my terms confused. Um, so do I hear motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? I'll second. All those in favor? Mark? Joe?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Very good. Uh, and so at this point, I make a motion to adjourn this planning board meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries with a majority. Uh, thank you, everybody. And we will see you on February 18th to continue this, uh, public hearing.
Thank you.